Call the April 17th City Council Meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day, please, sir.
Let's assume that to the prayer. Our Father God, we come once again, thankful for the minute blessing you allow us, God. Thank you, God, for this opportunity to be stewards of your city. We ask, Lord, you guide our tongues and our mind, that all that which you say and do will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Bless our residents and all those in the chamber, in that son Jesus name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. The Ford Mustang is officially unveiled by Henry Ford II at the World's Fair in Flushing Metals, New York, on April 17th, 1964. Named for a World War II fighter plane, the Mustang was one of the first vehicles that came to be known as a pony car. Ford sold more than 400,000 Mustangs within its first year of production, far exceeding sales expectations. The Mustang was conceived as a working man's Thunderbird, according to Ford, and carried a starting price tag of around $2,300. Fact of the day.
All right, got a set of minutes from the April 3 meeting. Any corrections? If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries now. Okay.
What?
We can't hear you.
Oh.
It's, okay.
Everybody's mics on?
Yeah, my mic's on.
Okay, Cliff, any changes that you, any changes to the agenda?
No, you don't.
All right, thank you. All right, we've got a couple of proclamations we'd like to get to. One that's, one that I, gosh, been partnering with this man for a long time. Louis, it's been, gosh, the years at county and now the years here at the city. And it's something we do every year, we do Denim Day. And so, you want to, why don't you go ahead and give us your facts and then I'll go ahead and read the proclamation.
Okay, dynamite. Well, thank you so much, Mayor, for supporting us again this year. My name's Louis Damiani, I'm the Executive Director of the Victim Service Center of Central Florida. And, you know, we, believe it or not, we have been providing help and healing to victims for 25 consecutive years now. We're celebrating our 25th year. We operate a 24-hour helpline, staff with trauma-informed counselors, and we provide in-person crisis intervention services, advocacy, therapy, and prevention education. We are the only rape crisis center in all of Central Florida, and we provide emergency services 24/7. What that kind of equates to is this past year, we provided 354 sexual assault exams to people in crisis. We made, answered over 2,200 helpline calls, and we conducted over 3,200 therapy sessions for, second time over 3,000 therapy sessions over the last two years. And altogether, we helped over 9,000 individuals across our community. Now, with that said, we got to get those numbers down. And the way to do that is through awareness. In this month, the month of April, is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So every, every April, we engage our supporters. It's probably been a decade now that we've been doing what we call Denim Day. It always happens on the last Wednesday in April. And every year, we try to engage all of our local governments. Monday night, I was in Osceola County, Tuesday, I was in Kissimmee, tonight, I'm here. We'll be in Orange, already last week, picked up Seminole County. So all of our local governments are supporting us. And then we literally have hundreds and hundreds of businesses that are joining on board. And the great part is, every citizen, every individual can participate in Denim Day. Again, it always happens on the last Friday in April. And this year, that day happens to be April the 24th. It's super, super easy to participate, and it's absolutely free. We have a whole page on our website dedicated expressly to Denim Day. If anybody wants to pull it up, you can print posters to hang out, hang around in your workplace. But effectively, what we want you to do is take a picture, well, wear your denim, then take a picture wearing your denim, and then you post it, use the hashtag #DenimDay, and then you tag us @VSCFlorida. And we're on every social media platform that you can imagine. And then just watch it explode. And I was just talking to your PIO over here, and she goes, "We're going to take a big picture on the steps, and then we're going to post it, and you will see, you'll see it spread all the way across Florida." And then, actually, we were into Georgia last year. So our little piece of Orlando and trying to spread awareness about, you know, sexual violence, what sexual violence is, and why we need to eradicate it in our community. And this is, this is a simple, easy way to take a stand against sexual violence, to stand in solidarity with survivors, and really set aside a time to have a conversation, make it public, and say, "Hey, we're not going to tolerate that here in our community." So again, I honor you for staying with us year after year and allowing us to come back and get this message out to the community. And thank you for having us.
Thank you for what you do. And yeah, Will, so next Wednesday, if you see some folks around City Hall in jeans, you'll know why. So it's a, put in what you feel is appropriate to the jar, and all that money then will go toward Louis and his team, so.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, you guys always raise money for it. We don't even ask people to raise money, but the mayor always gives me a big satchel of cash. So we're happy to take it, by the way, if anybody wants to donate.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Louis, thanks for what you and your team do.
My pleasure.
So with that, let me read the proclamation, then we'll get a, we'll get a picture with you. Whereas the month of April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, calling attention to the fact that sexual assault and harassment is widespread and harms our community. And whereas the shocking reality is that one in four women and one in 26 men will be sexually assaulted during their lifetime. And whereas the Denim Day movement started in 1999 as a grassroots protest against an absurd, controversial Italian Supreme Court decision in which a sexual assault conviction was overturned because the victim was wearing tight jeans at a time of her attack. And whereas Denim Day is the longest-running sexual violence prevention and education campaign in history, which seeks to rid the world of erroneous and destructive attitudes about sexual assault and bring about the real justice and support for survivors. And whereas Denim Day encourages everyone to make a social statement by wearing jeans on this day as a visible means of protest against the misconceptions that surround sexual violence, and to speak up when they hear comments that blame victims or make light of sexual harassment or assault. And whereas together, we can change how people think and talk about this kind of violence and create a culture of respect, equality, and safety for our entire community. And whereas the City of Apopka strongly supports the Victim Service Center of Central Florida and their efforts to prevent the traumatizing effects of sexual violence and help heal those that have been impacted. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 24th, 2024, as Denim Day. Next up, we have a presentation on the Autism Acceptance Month proclamation. And it really takes on a whole new meaning because of what our fire, excuse me, our police department and Officer Sosa has done to kind of get this to the forefront and make some changes, needed changes within the department, so that we know how to handle somebody as they deal with them at the, you know, the front steps or in their car. And so, we appreciate, you know, you and Chief McKinley and all that you've done to make this an issue right at the top of your, you know, programming. So with that, I'd like to read this, the proclamation. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, or autism, is a neurological and development disorder that develops in early childhood but progresses through a person's lifetime. Autism presents itself with a wide range of symptoms, which is why it is considered a spectrum and widely varies from one person to another. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, CDC, autism affects an estimated 1 in 36 children and 1 in 45 adults in the United States today. People with autism may have difficulty communicating and interacting with others. Those with autism may have delayed language and may have restricted and repetitive behavior. And whereas autism impacts a person's communication, interactions with others, and how they learn. Common symptoms that transcend the four categories are repetitive behaviors, avoidance of eye contact, change in voice, anxiety, learning disabilities, sensitivity to sound, and social interaction. And whereas, on average, autism is diagnosed around the age of five in the U.S., with signs appearing by age two or three. And whereas early diagnosis can make a big difference in access to diagnosis and services that can help autistic people of all ages thrive. And whereas April is Autism Acceptance Month, and whereas the City of Apopka, the Apopka Police Department, recently implemented the APD Special Needs Registry Program to serve people with disabilities, including individuals with autism. APD will maintain a database to notify officers during calls for service if someone at the residence or location has a disability. In addition, families can place a decal on their vehicle and/or their residence, which provides identification of a disability to police in order to respond properly. This registry allows our police department to provide a safe community and reduce miscommunication during emergency calls for service. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim April 24th as Autism Acceptance Month in the City of Apopka. Come on, Officer Sosa, come on up and give a couple of words, and then we'll have to get a picture with you, please.
Hello? Good? All righty. First off, I want to say thank you again for being able to speak in front of you guys. I'm happy to say that with the help of everybody at the police department, with the help of IT, and obviously with the help of Chief and his approval, we've got the website down, it's officially ready to go. And we've got brochures, stickers, and other information that could be used to hand out to our citizens, so that they can be as knowledgeable as possible whenever having any questions of, of anything having to do with either autism or any person with disability. So I would like to keep it short, but I'd like to thank you guys, of course, for listening to me today and also listening to me last month. Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you for taking such an interest in that. All right, next up, presentation by Blanche Sherman.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. At the last council meeting, the mayor asked that I come back and share and provide an overview, flow chart, of the city's check cashing or check processing. So I did have a flow chart for you. Guess I have to hit it. There we go.
Why don't you move the?
Run it up.
Yeah, just a little closer to the mic. There you go. Thank you.
You hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. To start our process, it starts with the purchasing process. You have to complete that process and then issue a PO. Level one of the purchasing process allows for purchases under $5,000 with a verbal quote and proof of cause. Level two, for purchases between $5,000 and $14,999, requires two written quotes. Level three, for $15,000 to $49,999, requires three written quotes. And $50,000 above requires a formal solicitation and, of course, council approval as well. So once that process is completed, the department can submit, you know, the work to be done. And after those services are completed, we're invoiced for those services. I'm going to try to use this. So they make their purchases. And then, the department, they review, when they get the invoice, the department director, they'll review the invoice and approve the invoice. And then they send that to accounts payable. The PO, the approved invoice, the delivery receipt, because we have to have documentation that the services have been provided or the goods have been received in acceptable form. So that goes to accounts payable. Then accounts payable reviews all of that information, the invoice, the delivery suite for accuracy and approval. If it's approved, accounts payable enters the, yeah, enters it into Edmonds for the check run. Okay? But if it's not approved, we notify the department for corrections, and we come back through that process. However, continuing on, if it's approved, on that Wednesday, close of business is our deadline for any new invoices to be received and processed for that weekly check run. Going forward, the accounts payable will enter any last-minute invoices, because it does happen, and for the data received on that Thursday. Again, we review the purchase order using the listing and verifying against the invoices. Another check goes on right there. Then accounts payable sends the PO list to the payroll and accounts payable manager to review it as well. If she doesn't find any errors, she will continue on with the accounts payable process to print the checks. If it is, it goes back through the process again to correct those errors. But moving forward, without any errors, the accounts payable makes the check with the backup. They match the check with the backup. Then they give that back to the payroll and accounts payable manager for review and final approval. If that's, we proceed without any errors on that, the payroll and council member checks the backup, like I said here, review and approve it going forward. Then she gives the checks back to the accounts payable specialists for mailing purposes. Then we take the checks over here to City Hall for mailing. If there's any corrections, of course, we go back through that process. So it's kind of simple, but it's not simple.
A lot of checks and balances.
A lot of checks and balances, a lot of steps that we go through, a lot of review and oversight. So we wanted to share that information. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Blanche? All right.
Thank you. I am not the one that's going to be presenting.
All right.
The next item is going to be Daniel Anderson. He's a partner with Malden and Jenkins. He's going to be presenting the annual audit results.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As Blanche mentioned, my name's Daniel Anderson, and I'm the partner with Malden and Jenkins, who had overall responsibility for the city's 2023 fiscal year-end audit. And I do have a presentation. Here we go. First of all, I'd like to just kind of point out that I'm happy to be here in the middle of April. You know, I know the last several years, it's been July, August that this presentation's been done. I actually went back six years, and, you know, this beats the most timely completion of the audit by about two and a half months. So that's certainly a testament to Blanche and her team for the extreme effort that they put in, really starting back in mid-September when we started planning the audit process, all the way through the beginning of April, whenever we were completed with that process. So happy to be here at this point in time and provide this information to you in a little bit more timely manner than we have in prior years. I do have a brief presentation for you here this evening, some brief information about Malden and Jenkins. I'll talk about the audit opinions and the annual comprehensive financial report. I'll go through the required communications under government auditing standards and then answer any questions and comments that you have. You should have a few documents in front of you. One is the annual comprehensive financial report or the Act for itself. The separate, the second is a document that we refer to as the auditor's discussion and analysis. And this provides all these required communications that I'll be going through in a written format, along with some additional information for you to read. And then the last one is the standalone financial statements for the CRA. Florida statutes require any community redevelopment agencies that had revenues or expenditures in excess of $100,000 to issue a standalone audit. So that's the third document that you have as well. So briefly, some information about Malden and Jenkins. We are a large regional audit organization with offices throughout the southeast. Your audit was performed from our Bradenton, Florida, office location. Our governmental niche is the firm's largest niche, serving over 700 governmental entities in that footprint. Additionally, we do complete approximately 225 standalone single audits. And that's a compliance audit that we performed here for the city as well regarding expenditures of federal awards. Some basic information about the Act for, you know, the only required section under government accounting standards is the financial section there. So the introductory section that provides the transmittal letter, the organizational chart, et cetera, and the statistical section, which provides 10 years' worth of information over financial trends, revenue capacity information, debt capacity information, and operating information. That's where the city's chosen to go above and beyond what's required by statute and by, like I said, government accounting standards. The financial section is the required part that includes our audit report, management's discussion and analysis, as well as the basic financial statements and footnotes. I'll say, it is a very large document. But if you kind of break it down and pick and choose what you're wanting to look at, it's a little bit easier to float through. And I'm sure Blanche would be happy to go over any of that information. And I'd be happy to meet with any of you guys individually as well if you had any specific questions or wanted some extensive time reviewing it. We perform an audit to give our opinion on the fairness of the presentation of the financial statements. We always want to point out, we do consider the internal control structure, such as the accounts payable process that Blanche went through, for the purpose of designing our procedures to support our opinion. However, we're not issuing an opinion on the effectiveness of those internal controls. Our audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards, to provide reasonable, not absolute, assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And the financial statements are the responsibility of city's management. I'm happy to report that we've issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that we can provide. And our responsibility does not extend beyond the financial information contained within our report. In the back of the document, there are some additional reports that you'll notice. The first is a compliance report, or what we refer to as a yellow book report. And this is a report in regards to our test of internal controls and compliance with respect to laws, rules, and regulations that are deemed direct and material to the city. This is a negative assurance report, which means we're not providing an opinion, only pointing out any findings if we noted them. I'm happy to report that there are no current year findings, which again, is the first time in at least six years or potentially beyond that, I only went back six years, that your auditors can stand up here and say that we had no findings in performing the audit. I spoke previously about the single audit. The city did receive and spend approximately $3.8 million in federal awards, which required us to perform an audit over two major programs, covering $3.2 million of the $3.8 million of those expenditures. And we had no issues in regards to compliance or internal controls over compliance with respect to those grants that we tested. Some of the required communications that I mentioned that I'll go through here quickly, like the financial statements, management's responsible for the application of its accounting policies described in Note 1 of the financial statements. There was a new governmental accounting standard statement that was issued in the current year related to subscription-based IT arrangements, or CBITAs. If you'll remember, last year, we implemented a new standard relating to leases, where essentially, if you had commitments that extended beyond one year, they were bringing the present value of those future commitments onto the balance sheet and giving you a right to use that asset and then a corresponding liability. This is the same accounting application, but it's over any subscription softwares that the city's utilizing. And again, with contracts exceeding one year. So that has been implemented and recorded within the city's financial statements. And considering the qualitative aspects of the city's policies, we're not aware that the city's involved in any controversial emerging issues for which guidance is not available. The financial statements do include several management and estimates that we evaluate as part of our audit process. Some of those significant estimates include the fair value of investments. It includes the net pension and total OPEB liability that the city has recorded. And it could also include, you know, the determination of the depreciable lives of your capital assets. So we evaluate those estimates as part of our audit procedures and deem that they are appropriate in accordance with the accounting guidance that we have. Again, as I mentioned, we received full cooperation from Blanche and her team and had no disagreement with management over the application of any accounting policies or procedures. At the conclusion of the audit, we obtained written representation from management over the information provided to us. We're not aware of management's consultation with other accountants, or what we refer to as opinion shopping. There were no significant issues discussed with management. There were audit adjustments that were proposed and have been recorded in the city's accounting records, but there were no uncorrected misstatements where we proposed an audit adjustment, and management elected not to post it. And then additionally, as part of the audit process, we are auditing the footnotes to the financial statements as well and ensuring that they are neutral and consistent in accordance with their required standards. We're not aware of the audits being an information other than what's been provided to you. And lastly, Malden and Jenkins is independent with respect to the city. So I mentioned the auditor's discussion and analysis that you have in front of you. That does include all the required communications that I went through. Again, you won't find any findings or recommendations in there for the current year audit. And it does include some upcoming GASB standards and pronouncements that will be in effect in future years. GASB has slowed down a little bit, so there isn't anything really that significant that's going to be impacting the city, at least in the next two fiscal years. And that's the conclusion of the presentation that I have. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about my presentation, the Act for document itself, or the audit process.
Any questions for Daniel? No questions? Well, just, I've got just a couple of things I'd like you to just to... When was the last time that you talked to me about the audit?
It was probably when we started in the planning phase, back in August, September.
Okay. And then, have you ever donated any, any money to campaigns with, anybody on this diet?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Super. Well, no other questions for him? That's, that's awesome. Thank you, Daniel, appreciate your help.
Thank you.
All right. We've got six consent agenda items. Does anybody need to have any of them pulled? Oh, public, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
Rod Olson, you want to come on down?
Rod Olson, 3156 Roland Hills Lane, Apopka. Mayor, Commissioners, again, thank you for what you do. Picture up, oh, good, we got them together. These 11 outstanding individuals are our fleet maintenance. I learned a few things along the way as I've been working with them, as I bring vehicles in occasionally to them. No matter what you're doing, what they're doing, someone drops what they're doing and comes out and greets, whether it's the officer, the fire department, or a volunteer like myself, to take care of business. I learned that it's not fire trucks, and it's not squads, and it's not four-by-four vehicles. They are called pieces of equipment. And they maintain and keep on the road 1,500 pieces of equipment. They're just a great group of guys and do a great job. And left to right, I just go Miguel, Cody, Colton, Scott P., Bill, Scott K., Jonathan, Walter, Dan, Charles oversees the group. Ben's in a separate picture, couldn't get them all together. But Ben orders every part for every piece of those 1,500 pieces of equipment. They're a great group of guys. You have a chance to meet them or talk with them, don't hesitate. They're just a great group of people and do a fantastic job. I do have a couple more things. I'm not letting up on the fields at North Recreational Complex. Go for yourself and see, there are some minor improvements, but overall, they need work. They need more work, they need rest, we need more fields. We'll save the city and taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, rather than going two a year for the next five years to get that ball rolling more quickly. Finally, I am not a current dog owner. I've had dogs in the past, but we need to make sure we tie our dogs in. This past week, we had on the 10th, we had gopher tortoise day out at Kitle and Nelson Park. Dogs urinating on the post or the playground material, urinating on the beds around it. Dogs under the control or lack of control of small children. That twice intervention had to happen when a dog got aggressive with another dog, where adults had to jump in and try to move it. We need to do that. The same thing goes at the Northwest Recreational Complex. We have a woman, I will get her license number, that goes with the vehicle drives around the park, scaring runners, scaring walkers, scaring joggers, scaring kids being run along in their little carriages with their mom, because the dogs are large, they're aggressive. They bark out the window, and they have a great timing of waiting till they're right on your doorstep, and boom, they're, we need to do something about that. Responsibility, also at the Northwest Recreation Complex, for Saturday Night Sounds. As much as I enjoy it, we have some people that think, oh, my dog is so well behaved. They're just going to let them walk around without being on a leash. There are kids out there throwing balls around, things going on. Please take responsibility for your pets. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. It's always nice to see you guys. So on April 6, art took over downtown. Art on Main Street gathered a great host of talent in an epic collaboration and filled the streets with vibrant art and activities. It began with a sidewalk chalk competition hosted by Commissioner Nesta, followed by the art walk market designed and curated by the Apopka Murals Group, No Borders Art Competition, and the Downtown Barbers. In the evening, Main Street Apopka showcased breathtaking creativity featuring five local artists during the very first pop-up gallery and announced the winner of the downtown art competition. Then came the after-party. Art After Dark hosted at Three Odd Guys Brewing had a belly-burping good time as the creative hub rallied folks to partake in the online TikTok challenge, Paint Your Partner. Misty Morning Crafts brought her pottery wheel to demonstrate her craft. And You Don't Know Jack collaborations had artists painting live. The master on display that day was really magical. And to showcase this Art on Main Street event, I've brought our recap video to play for you all tonight. We'd like to extend a special thank you to all of our partners and sponsors that helped bring this event to life, and also to Commissioner Nesta and Commissioner Velazquez for attending our pop-up gallery. Our downtown art competition brought in 3,528 online votes, and the winner was Cassandra Brown with her acrylic on-canvas depiction of Highland Manor. We're hopeful that her expertise, talent, and creativity will help our program design an image for downtown that residents and visitors can connect and identify with. We are continuing to receive feedback from the community about Art on Main Street through an online survey and are thrilled with the positive responses surrounding it. Now, speaking of surveys, we have two additional online surveys available on our website that we would love the public's opinion. The Small Business Survey for anyone who owns or operates either a mobile, at-home, or brick-and-mortar business in Apopka. And then the Visitor Survey for anyone who does not have an Apopka address. And both surveys can be found on our website. We're already looking forward to our next event and encouraging everyone to follow Main Street Apopka on Facebook, Instagram, and to check out our website. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Awesome. And what's the website?
MainStreetApopka.com.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for making that day happen. It was a really fun, the whole day was absolutely incredible. So thank you for, you're really redefining how we kind of experience our city. And I'm very thankful for your group for that. So thank you.
It was. We enjoyed it.
Good evening. Sylvester Hall, 391 Roland Hills Lane. Mayor, Commissioners, it's always good to be here. As I say, it's another day in paradise. But I have to remind people, our country, our city, our state, and our country, we still in a national crisis. Too many good people. And I have to keep hominist, because in the military, we had training, annual, monthly, semi-aureal, but it had to be consistent. So everybody would know their responsibilities. And so that's why I keep bringing this up, because this is the problem with our country today. Too many good people are standing by watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it. Today, we need strong leadership that will stand up for the people. Remember, we're here to serve the people. So today, we need strong leadership now that will stand up for the citizens and say what is right and do what is right. Remember, this world won't be destroyed by evildoers. It's going to be destroyed by good people like ourselves, sitting around, watching things happen, and not saying anything about it. We're afraid to get involved, we're afraid of the consequences. But remember, somebody died for us to have this freedom that we have today. And it's up to us to preserve that freedom. When we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth. And sometimes, we don't care about the truth. So I'm going to hit this when I hit it before. We all just got up and we said, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." We all say that, and it ran off our tongue so smoothly. But we know it's not true. We live in a world today where we know that it's not true. And it's up to each and every one of us to make sure that is a reality, though it would just be a sin. That's where we at today. We don't realize what we're saying and what we say. We just say it out of habit, not out of reality. I bring this up because if we want to truly make this a paradise, if we hold our leaders and our elected officials to these simple values, principles, integrity, honesty, accountability, responsibility, morals, ethics, character, procedures, leadership, laws, all these things matters. And that's what we should expect out of you, at a minimum. So when you look at this picture here, you look at the picture, you say... And this was a training point in my career that I'd never forget. When my supervisor said, "Look at this picture, what do you see?" Some people see a beautiful young lady, some people see an old lady. Some people can see them both. But the point is, you can see that it's a lady. So it's okay if you see things differently. But at a face value, we should be able to see that it is a woman, whether it's old, whether it's young. We should be able to see that. And so when it comes to what's right and what's wrong, we should be able to distinguish that. If we don't, we're doing the citizen of this country a disservice. We're doing our first responders a disservice. Now, when it comes to the audit, if everything that the mayor has presented to you, then the audit that Commissioner Nesta is asking for, it should be a piece of cake. It should be a piece of cake. Honesty, integrity, that has to be a law that we live by when we're serving people. So I ask for the Duran family. One, the city commissioner said, we're going to...
Thank you, Sylvester. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate it. Okay, who's next, Susan? Who's next?
Albert McKemme, 3603 Golden Gem Road. Before I came here tonight, I handed in the dockets to Commissioners, to the mayor, and to the city clerks, so it's a matter of record. Tonight, I am here to ask that our Commissioners support the request for an emergency resolution to pay the residents in the city to have independent water analysis carried out on their wells. The city having been negligent or having displayed criminal intent with respect to the cover-up of a massive spill of non-potable water from its retention ponds in Golden Gem Road, which were designed to hold 350 million gallons of water. And at the time of these photographs being approximately 60% capacity, these ponds are now virtually empty. The city has failed in its duties to report the sudden and vast egress of water in these ponds to relevant authorities. These dissipated into the surrounding environment. The city has failed to inform the residents of the possible health and safety hazards resulting from the failure of the liner due to their inability to properly supervise the project. The city has issued documentation that states the problem cannot be remedied for six months. The city has failed to supply us with information that we requested through Freedom of Information Acts. However, the city today gave a statement to a TV channel stating the information they could not provide us with. These numbers were miraculously picked from a hat or the work of fiction, because according to the city's own documentation, it will be six months before an RFP can be written and the procurement arranged to determine exactly what requires to be done after a thorough investigation. The city has cited the problem occurred because a contractor excavated too deeply into the retention ponds. Will the city be holding that contractor liable? Even though the city's own engineering department was responsible for overseeing the work carried out? What contractual obligation has the city entered into with partners with respect to these retention ponds? How does the city propose to service the contracts, including Altamont Springs, now that they have lost 350 million gallons of the 450 million gallons of storage they had? I have obtained documentation to support my comments. Many of the questions asked here tonight have already answers for. We've carried out research. These questions are being asked simply for transparency and accountability. Tomorrow, you will read it on the news. Today, I request for you to support an emergency resolution into a speedy remedy, because with the onset of rain and hurricane season, many areas will face flooding if the administration fails to resolve the problems highlighted here tonight. In respect of the city's failure to report on this, I personally propose a vote of no confidence in the Water Department and suggest that Brian Nelson tenders his resignation because of his inability to run this administration in a manner conducive to public safety. We do not want to see further loss of life or mismanagement due to his incompetence.
Mike Duran, Clearmont. I'm just here to clear up a couple of things. Make sure everybody is understanding what my family has done. It's been 642 days since the death of Austin Duran, Apopka firefighter. In that time, we have absolutely waged a war against the city and the Apopka administration in the efforts to prevent something like this from ever happening again. We had learned in the course of this time that our attorney had listed individual firefighters on the lawsuit. And that did not align with my family's core values. We have always, for the last 642 days, supported our firefighters from one end to the other. And we did not feel comfortable having an individual firefighter's name on our lawsuit. So this is a letter that we sent our attorney. Good morning, John. As discussed yesterday, we would like the lawsuit against the city of Apopka terminated with prejudice. At this time, we appreciate all the hard work and effort you had to put into this claim, and we are thankful for your belief that fallen firefighter Austin Duran's wrongful death and negligence, that the city and the Fire Department should be held to a higher standard of accountability and agreeing to represent us. We still feel that there was gross negligence on the city and the Fire Department's administration part, specifically Fire Chief Sean Wyllam and Division Chief John Howe, to allow the sand trailer to be used amidst the warnings of others, lack of maintenance, and absence of training. It was important for us, not only for the city, but also the Apopka Fire Department, to do the right thing and admit that they had done something wrong, correct it, and own up to the negligent death of our son. As discussed in our conversation, we are not dropping this claim because we believe we do not have a winnable case. We are not dropping this claim because we feel defeated. We are only dropping this claim because we do not want to cause any discourse with or between our dedicated and hard-working firefighters. As noted in various reports by consultant agencies and the Florida Fire Marshal's Office, the Apopka Fire Department is far from perfect, and they have a long way to go to become the Fire Department that my son envisioned. Our intent was to uncover carelessness and lack of judgment, lack of training, and lack of safety by the administration of the Fire Department, and to rightfully hold the fire chief responsible and accountable, but never to target individual firefighters that were swept up in our quest for justice. It is our hope that the city of Apopka and the Apopka Fire Department considers this a gift of good faith from my family and our son, fallen Apopka firefighter Austin Duran, as we will continue to honor him, remember him, and carry out his legacy of serving this community of Apopka as a firefighter. This lawsuit is done. It's over. We will not seek this again, and we want to get back to business. We still feel that the city can do things, and the Apopka Fire Department can do things, to hold their individuals accountable. Our goal was to make sure that this never happens again, and I'm sure every single person in this room agrees to that. We only brought this suit because we wanted to provoke change. And we felt that we did. We got the 18 firefighters that were desperately needing... We got the 18 firefighters that were desperately needed. We got the training chief that we didn't have. We got the health and life and safety chief that we didn't have. Will Sanchez is here today, and he testified that the department is making progress, and that's what we wanted. We didn't want to hold anybody to harm, we didn't want to, we're not out to hurt anybody, but we know what happened with our son could have been prevented. And our aim and our goal was just to make sure that that doesn't happen to another family, that we want every firefighter to go home at the end of their shift. Austin did not. Thank you.
Mary Bushman?
Hi, my name is Mary Bushman, I live at 307 North Hawthorne Avenue. I just wanted to bring some information about what is happening in my community. I live at, on Hawthorne Oaks. Our neighborhood is an HOA neighborhood, and the front of the neighborhood, the drain is collapsing. Public Works Department has been made aware, this is an ongoing thing, I have been told that it's going to be repaired, there's just no timeline. And we need to have a timeline, because we have two very mature oak trees at the front of our entrance, and they are in danger of collapsing because of that. The other thing I want to bring up is, we have a retention pond also at the front of our neighborhood. It seems that with the construction of the new car wash, water has been filling our pond. It is higher than it normally is. Trees that are on the bank of the pond are now submerged in the water. That is a big concern for us. We don't know if the water is being drained from, from that car wash, but we need to know if it is, and if there's a remedy for it, because we don't want to flood. The other thing is, a year ago, Lumen came into our neighborhood and started the fiber optic situation. They dug up our yards, they tried to make a remedy with new sod, it all died. This month, it's MetroNet, they have literally destroyed our yards. It's a 65-home community, and when I mean destroyed, I have a little tiny patch of land, okay? It's 60 feet wide, I have nine very large dead spots in the easement area. They came out and replaced the sod, the sod is now dead. So that is our, our three concerns right now for the, our HOA community. I appreciate it, thank you.
And you've, we've got your information, right?
Yeah.
You've sent us, you've sent us an email?
Yes.
Yeah, right, I know, we're, okay, so, Dio's not here, but, but, um...
Well, and I, my understanding is there is going to be another...
Yes.
...company coming out. So that'll be three quantum fiber.
There's, there's four of them in the, in the, yeah.
What's your HOA's name again?
Hawthorne Oaks.
Hawthorne Oaks, thank you.
Hawthorne Oaks, that's what I wanted, Hawthorne Oaks.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Stacia Carter?
I wish I'd known that we could, that we could bring pictures, because I have pictures on my phone. My name is Stacia Carter, and I live in the pines of O'Kaver subdivision. I'm also on our HOA board, and I serve as vice president. Our subdivision is being damaged or destroyed, for lack of better words, by various companies digging up our lawns, streets, common areas to install fiber. In December, when we discovered paint markings on our streets and lawns, as well as flags in our yards, I called the city of Apokka, and I also submitted a written records request to find out why. Apokka said they had no permits or knowledge of any planned work. A week later, I received an email that the markings were because the state requires utilities to be marked every few years. In the past few weeks, we have had at least two different companies laying fiber cables in our subdivision, digging up lawns, drilling into streets, breaking sprinkler heads, breaking sprinkler lines, leaving areas in disarray. Members of our community have called the city for assistance, and each time, we have been brushed off. One company, Apex, who was digging for Blue Street, had a supervisor contact me, and they worked with us when there were issues. The next company said they would put anything they dug up back in place, but so far, that has not been true. Today, a neighbor called the city because a third company was drilling so hard that they were rattling the pipes inside her home. The city's response was, there was nothing they could do and call back if they burst a pipe. This is unacceptable. Why are we at the mercy of these companies, and the city has no control at all over their work? It seems no permits are required, or at least that's what we've been told, and it seems the city is washing their hands of any responsibility when someone from our community calls. We understand utilities have a right of way, but what can, but what can and what will be done for the citizens of Apokka, or are we at the mercy of each and every fiber company who decides to dig? Are there regulations that must be followed? Why isn't any notice required? I'm asking, what is the city of Apokka's involvement and responsibility in this mess? And I do mean mess. I have pictures to show the mess they are leaving our subdivision in. If you look at my subdivision, you will see this mess. Thank you for your time.
Cliff, do you want to weigh in on the, it's, it is a mess, and I, I, this is our attorney, so just so you know.
Briefly, there's, there's, they, the utilities have lots of rights, and we don't have as many. What we have is the ability to call people and fuss with them and try to get them to cooperate, and sometimes that works, and sometimes it doesn't, and the closer they are to franchise renewal, the more likely they'll talk to you and listen, and the farther they are away, the less they listen. That, that's sad reality, but I, I'll be happy to reach out to them and fuss, I don't have a problem with that.
Because I do have the name of the AT&amp;T area manager, who is, I think she's Blue Street, Blue Street is digging for AT&amp;T. She promised me someone would call me Monday morning into the subdivision to show all the places they've dug, that they have a replace. They also had cables sticking out of the, sticking out of the ground in some places. And then our front, if you've ever driven down Rock Springs Road, and you see our front, we've always had a really nice entrance, and also now half of it is sand. So I do have that name, and then I only have the name of the third company that showed up today. I don't have a supervisor, because they don't, because the workers, most of them don't speak English, or at least they pretend they don't speak English, and they won't give us a name of a supervisor.
No, no problem. I'm happy to give you my contact information, and, and take care of reaching out to whomever you've spoken to and see if I can't get somebody to... Sometimes when you say attorney, that gets people's attention, not all the time, but sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, Rob, would you mind getting your team together and see if we can at least get the, the four companies, get some kind of a contact, and let's put something up on the website, just so, you know, and we can put the, get with Cliff, we'll put a disclaimer at the front end that, you know, here are the four companies out here, here is a, a district manager that if you have a, an issue with, you know, a water line, I, they cut my water line at the, at my office on Park Avenue, so I, I know the, I feel the pain as well.
The pain is real.
Yeah, yes. So if we could, if you could help me with that, thank you, thank you, Rob. Okay. All right, next up?
Roxanne Rhea?
Anybody else?
Ace Woodham, Apokka, Florida. Mayor has a pretty good acting show there, I thought they was gonna put a loose around your neck first, but you had to tell them you didn't take the money from the investment company, or you didn't ask them no favors or anything. You know you're getting pretty good at that. I wasn't coming up here to not even talk about you, but you're so easy. Lie after lie, corruption after corruption, no heart. You take the good hometown community and turn it to a septic tank. Preach to them people out there, on Welch Road, 165 of them, they had to have that septic system put in. What a lie. Even your own engineer here has a waste of their money, but you don't care, because you probably got a kickback since the guy from Tallahassee, and you were friends with him up there when you were there. But you know, it's all gonna catch up with you, like you are the gross negligent reason that Austin Duran's life is no longer with us. You and you alone. You put a man incapable of running a fire department that placed someone that was incapable of doing that job, and a young man's life was lost. Ryan's very disempowering in the way you've done to the city. Mayor Land ran it 60 years without it, nowhere near the controversy that you've caused. Nowhere near it. And when he said I was Apokka proud, that's because he was. He wasn't only proud of his term as the mayor, he was proud of the citizens of this community that reached out and loved to come home from work and sit in their front yard, go to a ballgame on Saturday morning and enjoy their families, go to the city park and enjoy it. That's gone. You have certain areas when, you can go to on certain times. Y'all put a fence around the amphitheater. We got parked rangers out there, I don't know what the reason for the fence is, probably never will know, but to me, it'd been a lot more simpler to hire some more rangers, retired officers or something, and let them have a little extra income, instead of paying all that money for that fence. Also, the, real quick, before I run out of time here, because people's got something on their mind, or limited to what they can say. But the VFW, those veterans over there, they've been running that place for a long time. Here's my thought on it, maybe the city should manage the bookings, and let the veterans go ahead and continue putting the chairs and tables up, and let them keep receiving the same thing. We ain't missed that money in the past, and it sure helped them out. There's no reason to change that contract. Y'all manage, y'all do the bookings, and that way, there won't be no cross-bookings or anything else, and let the veterans continue drawing the money they were drawing. They're there every day, that's their home, that's a lot of people, that's all they got. They go up there just to socialize. You know that, Diane. They got their little museum in there, something they're proud of. They're proud of they stood up for this country and fought for us, for some assholes to run it the way they want to, and do the way they want to. And by the way, the county is getting that paperwork for me. It's the denim, Jerry Den, uh, Demmons money, Brian, you act like you didn't know what it was about last meeting? Now you do.
Okay. All right, we've got six consent agenda items. Anybody need to pull any of those? Not look for motion to approve? Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, approval of the easement agreement with Duke Energy?
Evening, Mayor Commissioners. Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here first tonight for approval of an easement agreement with Duke Energy. Excuse me. We need temporary power installed at the location, the city property, where the Fire Station Six fire truck is going to be located while the station is constructed. So this is a simple easement agreement for Duke Energy to come on the property, install the overhead line for that service to, to plug the truck in.
Any questions for Radley? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Not with close of public hearing, look for motion to approve the easement agreement with Duke Energy. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez? Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, execution of the recreational facility use agreement with Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 10147.
All right. After last council meeting, I met with the VFW commander and leadership staff to discuss the items that were discussed at the council meeting. Out of those, we did discuss the additional dates for the bingo, and actually, they're looking at a Bunko fundraiser as well, so we did add in the 24 dates for that. We did ask that and put in that those would be Monday through Thursday dates for those type of fundraisers. We updated Exhibit B, as far as compensation, to $20 an hour for rental, use of the VFW tables and chairs, and $20 an hour per rental for use of the VFW kitchen equipment. Terms were also added for the VFW to provide their IRS Form 990 annually, which is what they have to report as a nonprofit to the IRS with their tax return. VFW was agreeable to all the adjustments, and Commander Anderson signed the agreement this morning, so we are ready to proceed at the pleasure of the council.
Any questions for Radley?
Just one quick question, sorry I didn't ask this before. The financial reporting requirements, is that on any of other, our other agreements with any other entity?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to speak? Not with close of public hearing, look for motion to... Sure.
Sylvester Hall, just for the record, the question that Commissioner Nesta just asked, the annual filing, it's not on other contracts, so why do it need to be on the VFW contract? Can we, can we have that removed? If it's not on any other contract, we want to be consistent, these are the things that I'm talking about, being fair, being consistent. We're here to serve everybody equally, whether we like them or whether we don't, it's our job to serve all people, not discriminate, not to impose our likes or dislike. It's what is the law, and what is fair, and what is the procedure. If we don't do it for everybody else, why are we doing it for the VFW? So for the record, I ask for it to be taken off.
I guess what, that ends great point, that was my question, I guess what's the reasoning for that, or the motivation for that?
I believe part of the discussion is that the VFW is getting a great benefit out of the use of the building, so to verify that the filings are happening as they should be. The, the Form 990 is a public document.
So we have access to it anyways, then? So it doesn't need to be in here, then? If we were to have access to it, then I wouldn't put in the lease, or I, it's not a lease, but...
Use agreement.
Agreement, thank you.
It's at the pleasure of the board.
Well, I would move to, uh...
Well, before you move to do that, when we did ask for it, when was the last time that they filed it? Because my understanding was that the last time it was on file was 2019, am I correct?
I believe that was correct, yes.
So we don't have 20, 21, 22, 23? Is, is that correct?
Correct.
So the only other organization that is occupying or was occupying a city building is the chamber, the chamber, the Apokka Chamber Association.
They do have a lease for the building out in the parking lot, yes.
Do we have other organizations that use our facilities?
We have a facility use agreement with Central Forest Soccer Club to use the fields. We have a lease with the Orange Altamont Society for the Birding Park.
Well, that one, and did we make that requirement of the financial? Well, no, we, we leased...
Little League.
The Birding, Birding Park in the Little League, do they all provide? They don't.
We're not auditors. It's not our job, we're not the government... We're not auditors. It's not our job, or we're not the governing entity to make sure that their filings are done. That's for the IRS to do.
Right.
That's not our job. So I would move to approve this, but taking out that they have any type of financial reporting requirement within this agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
I want to be consistent with all the organizations that have. If you're not requiring it from the other ones, I don't feel it's, it's to single out the VFW organization. And I'm afraid it'll go two with two, but I'm going to second it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution number two thousand twenty-four oh eight.
Resolution twenty-four oh eight. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Papka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-three and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, mayor commissioners. Budget amendment two thousand twenty-four oh eight, as Susan just mentioned, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine thirty-one. I have four different items. I'll go over with you. The first item is insurance proceeds that we received from police K- nine Ted. He was entered in the, I assume, the line of duty and he was insured and we received fifteen thousand dollars and the police department would like to replace him. Also, we're asking for a head account increase for sanitation, an equipment operator. Due to the growth, of course, in sanitation, there's a need for an additional sanitation equipment operator. And so the cost reflected here is just to continue the cost related to going forward, not the entire year for the fiscal year. So it's forty thousand dollars, forty thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. I've always talked about a new system implementation since I've probably been here. You've heard me make some moans and groans about the current system that we have. So we want to begin that process of replacing that system. One of the main things that we need to do is document our system requirements to make sure we do this properly and get the system that really need, that we really need, that can meet our needs. So I'm asking for seventy thousand dollars to be taken out of reserve to bring on a consultant that we do have on the piggyback or you just approved under the piggyback agreement. So we can begin that replacement process of our financial system. The last item, we're asking for a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars out of reserves to cover the temporary move of Fire Station Six from Advent Health Hospital property due to new construction. Again, that total is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Any questions for Blanch?
Where we're moving the fire department to?
Benningale.
Yeah.
We own the property, we own the, where the cell tower is. We own the property across the street, which backs right up to an apartment complex.
Right.
So what we're going to do is have the firefighters will be staying in an apartment. And the, they go right through the, their fence into where our fire truck will be. So they're in the same, the building closest to the, to our property. So they're literally, they're as close from here to Radley. Their apartment to the, where the fire truck will be.
Okay, and there's going to be a hangar or something from the
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're building a hangar.
Some, they're moving some type of awning.
The awning we have will be moved.
I think they're adding another one if the chief told me.
And to confirm, they're still, we're still renting the trailer they're living in? Or no, we're going to be living in their apartment units?
Yeah, then that rent money will go towards that.
We've got it rented until
It's a cutoff.
We have what rented until October first?
The trailer.
The trailer.
And then what are we doing?
Then they, they take the, the owner of the trailer takes, they got, they're going to take it now because
We're only, okay.
Yeah.
There is a cutoff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Blanch? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
I hope I can get a response out of one of the four of you. Well, how long have we had the money for the Fire Station Six in our account? Can Blanch answer that or can you honestly look at the mayor and say it? You don't know? Yeah? No? I don't think you knew. Was it going to cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a temporary move? And we've had the money. We've had the land. And we sat on our asses not build a Station Six. Thank you taxpayers. Thank you so much. Unreal. And I just, I can't believe it. If Station Six still be, still be built by the end of the year, that promise that we all broke ground? Can't answer that one either.
Anybody else want to speak on this one? Not with close of public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh eight.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, city council reports. Commissioner Nesta, you want to start us out?
Got a couple of different items to go over. We're going to bounce around a little bit here. We did speak about, and I appreciate Commissioner Velazquez bringing up the Chamber of Commerce building. Is there an update with that or is it being used? When does the lease expire? What's going on with that building? And Radley, sorry, that, I, I forget that you are over that as well.
No worries. I did speak with the chamber, actually earlier today for an update. As you know, there's damage, storm damage to that building. They had to file some insurance claims to get that moving. They replaced the roof and then they also had to do some remediation inside the building. That's all been completed. And the latest update I got today was that they're approximately three weeks away from hopefully beginning the interior renovation of the building. They've received quotes and bids to do that work and have made a selection. And they'll be starting that again approximately, they gave me in about three weeks.
Okay, thank you for that. While you're up here, can you provide an update on the RFP for the soccer fields? What does that look like, a timeline? When can we start expecting actually seeing soccer?
Sure. So actually I had a meeting, follow-up meeting again with this, this morning on the soccer fields. We have built out the scope for the RFP that's going to go out for that or the bid that's going to go out for that. Reviewing that in the procurement division right now over in finance. That is the first bid up on the list for our Parks and Rec Department. And hoping to have that out here very shortly. At that point, we'll get the respondents back, make a selection and move forward.
What is that, to educate me please? Once it's at an RFP, we, it's thirty days, forty-five days?
I believe, don't quote me, that project I think is about thirty-day
Okay.
window.
And then from there, it'll come back to us, I assume?
For a contract approval.
Okay. And then, when can we start to expect to see ground moving?
As soon as that contract is signed, the, we're trying to move that thing
Yeah.
as fast as possible.
It's definitely needed.
Yes.
We hear it every meeting and it's definitely something that our community needs for sure, so.
And also just to kind of also highlight that project in particular. Rather than, as you know, we have a phased approach for this, for adding fields year over year. As opposed to having to bid this project or a similar project out every year. We have built the, the scope of the project to be a multi-year contract. So it's a natural field installation contract, so we can use that for multiple years and also multiple types of athletic fields.
So we'll know upfront our end date of these fields being complete then?
Correct. We'll have a contract signed and then it'll still be year over year based on the budget.
Okay.
But the procurement will be taken care of.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you. The golden gem issues, do we, I guess, what's going on with the, the water there, the wastewater pond? It's not wastewater.
It's not wastewater, it's reclaimed water.
That.
I know we're, we've got it out for not a design, it's just trying to determine what it is, whether it's a sinkhole, a legitimate sinkhole, or is it just a depression that formed in the bottom of the pond. So that's, and then we got to determine how to fix it. So hopefully we'll have some ideas in the next thirty to sixty days as to what, what the, the fix is for the pond.
Okay, and then where, i- is there requirements to report this to any governing bodies in any capacity?
Yes, it's been reported to DEP and to St. John's.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right. That's that one. I'm going to be starting to do every other month a city property cleanup. The one that I did on Martin Street was really successful. And so we're going to start doing that and there's a lot of residents that want to get involved in that. So we're going to start doing that more and more. So be on the lookout for that if there's any specific properties that we own that, that needed. I'm going to start with fire stations up front and, and move from there. I've talked to Radley, we're going to create a schedule and kind of move forward with that, do some other parks. I think that's going to be really beneficial for the community. Going on to, and again, a lot of this is going to be bouncing around here, the shade meeting for union negotiations. It was requested and it was, I guess, understood that you want to wait until Commissioner-elect Anderson is here.
Yes. So it'll be, I've talked to Jeffrey Mandell and we'll have it. He's got a I think a negotiation on the second. I want to say Daytona Beach or anyway, the East Coast. He should be done at around noon. So he said, when I get done from there, I'll come swinging this way and we'll some, he said, if you've got some flexibility during your commission meeting, I will make it, I'll make it happen. So he, so Cliff, we're good on the, we're just going to be flexible on when we go into the shade meeting.
Yeah, and because it's the labor shade meeting, you can, you have a lot of flexibility.
Yeah.
Notices and so forth, so.
Yeah.
So why don't we do Zoom like we did last time or previous time? To help expedite the process?
Well, she doesn't take, she doesn't take office until the thirtieth.
So I understand that too and, and Commissioner-elect Anderson too. Would you be comfortable with us having a meeting beforehand, before you actually are seated and then have another one after you're seated? We're going to have many more actually. Okay, so, and the only downside to that, other than the extensive delays that we've already been experiencing is that we have, from what I, my understanding, Orange County, Seminole County, Winter Park and Orlando are all actively going through negotiations right now. We're comparing all of our numbers to their old ones. Those are all going to be updated here soon. And it only gets more expensive as we progress. So the more delays that we experience, the more expensive this gets for my residents. So that's fine, as long as you guys understand that these delays are costing more and more money. I was just shown that City of Orlando opened up their contract for the police department and they just increased their pay for their police officers. So again, this is only going to get more expensive as the longer we delay this and it doesn't quite make sense why we need to continue to delay it, but that's okay.
So are we doing May second?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that right? Is it, or is it May first? Excuse me, May first. It will be during our commission meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, May first, I'm sorry.
And then in reference to the forensic audit, yes ma'am. I know you're asking for scope, things like that. You want very specific items labeled and things like that. I know we had the discussion and I wrote emails back and forth. And I stated it in the, the minutes that we also approved earlier today that my presentation was as granular as I want to get. I think it needs to be a very wide cast net was the whole point of this, that a five oh vote agreed to. So if you want, I don't know to what extent you need my assistance on that level, but I don't know if there it doesn't need to get more granular than that. It needs to be a wide net. That's the whole point of it and I don't know what else to, it doesn't need to get more specific, I guess. It's my concern is that the more specific we get, the more things we're going to miss.
So do you want me to disregard the comments from our previous commissioner Becker?
No, don't disregard anybody's, but his were also very broad as well. His were not deep dive specific, they were broad. He's referenced what he wanted and sure, use that as a, a template of sorts, but it's not going to be the, it only is this item. Again, it's, it's a wide cast net.
Okay, I would draft based on the information that I have and I'll send it out to each of you to give a final review. To let me know if that's how you want to proceed and we'll go for it.
That's perfect. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And mayor, I know you had said you had other items you want to add to that at the last meeting, so I would love to hear those at some point. Whenever you want to present those. We had, we pay a Tiger Bay Club membership fee. Is that for all the commission to go to and attend? What, what does that entail?
It's my membership, I'm served on the board as president of Tiger Bay Club, which is a, it's a political organization that we bring in both sides, you know, Republicans and Democrats and we talk about issues. So it's a we've, matter of fact, we've got one coming up the first of the next, next week, excuse me, May second. That's the reason I got the date wrong. The, for, we're having a legislative update, so I've got, I was in charge of selecting the speakers or our legislative panel, so I've got Broder, Truenow, Arrington, Thompson. This is two. So I was in charge of putting together the panel. So it's a way for me to, to, to be able to network with other elected officials in Orange, Seminole and Osceola counties.
So I, what I think would be beneficial if it's, I think we need to be allowed, all commissioners should be able to go to that as well. I think it'd be beneficial for that, so to fund that correctly so that we do have, everybody can learn and grow and network in the same capacity and get legislative updates as well. In May, I'm going to be starting to do office hours. It's going to be every Thursday from eleven to one PM here at City Hall. I'll have thirty-minute time slots for residents to come speak about whatever they'd like to speak about on whatever topic. Anything and everything or nothing. So I will be that much more available to our residents. So that'll be every Thursday starting in May from eleven to one PM. Spoke to Chief of Police as well as Lieutenant Brick. Where we, I was at the code enforcement meeting yesterday and I go to every single one. I've only missed one since being elected. And I've been told I was very missed at that one. Totally kidding. That not specifically to our fines, but more so the foreclosure policy and formalizing some type of policy that says once a residential property hits a million dollars in fines and as long as they don't, it's not a homestead of property, it doesn't have any other liens or clouded title, then we start the foreclosure process and pretty much everything else will start at one and a half million. And, and again, same requirement. So I think formalizing that and I'd like to hear from you guys, if you guys are open to that and having staff move forward with a formalized process for what the foreclosure process looks like for code enforcement.
That sounds like a good idea because we do have some that are what, up in the
No, we have many that are multimillions. So I just think it, it gives teeth to not only our department, but it also just, because the whole goal is not to gain properties or to gain money from fines, it's to just get everyone in compliance. That's our whole goal. That benefits the community in its entirety. So it's not a land grab. But I think that helps to when we formalize it and they know, okay, once that hits, once this dollar amount hits, then the, it's real now. You can't just keep this going on and on and on. So I think, I think it helps our code enforcement department to move forward with that. But again, I'd love to hear you guys' thoughts on that.
Do we actually have multiple, is it residential or commercial? Was it both? Do we have them exceeding a million?
Yeah, both.
We do have.
Yes. I, I get updates often about it and it's varying properties in varying areas and very different amounts. I want to say the highest one right now on the residential side is six million dollars in fines.
Six million dollars for one residence? Do they have a process? I mean, I'm looking at Chief McKinley with code enforcement. Do we have anything?
We do have a process in, in discussions with Commissioner Nesta. A lot of times it's what are the violations? Some of them are public safety issues that we do need to proceed with the attorney and move on. Some of them aren't necessarily a risk to the community or public safety or anything else. And those fines run and they may be put off to the side. If you all want to determine a dollar amount that they automatically go, I think we currently have fifteen or twenty with Mr. Shepherd's office going through the process. Obviously, there's a fee that he's charging us to do each one of these. So we try to take the most serious ones with the most serious So we try to take the most serious ones with the most serious violations to the attorney to follow through. You know, Lieutenant Brick does a good job of sitting down with the code enforcement officers all the time and deciding which ones need to go, which ones are at, you know, I think we do sort of consider the million-dollar threshold sort of excessive, obviously, and we make those determinations when he meets with them, and he'll forward those to Mr. Shepherd's office for the proceedings. So there's, there are a lot of things that go into how we decide what's going forward. And obviously, you know, we also try to be physically responsible with how many we have over there. He only has so many attorneys and we can't keep, you know, if we have 100 of them, I don't think we can send 100 to his office and expect them to be handled in a timely manner.
For purposes, each foreclosure costs $2,000 in filing fees. That's not legal fees. So if he sent 100, send me also $200,000 to pay the filing fees.
I mean, I'll be happy to work with anybody and make sure that, you know, we have a process in place. I think we have a process in place. I'm comfortable with the way it's being handled. But if you want me to look into a little bit further and come back and tell you, you know, I don't know what to tell you, because each situation is different. It's not that every violation is exactly the same. Some of them are very, you know, we need to deal with them and we need to deal with them immediately. And some of those get brought before the code enforcement hearing a little bit quicker than some of them that we're just trying to get somebody, again, as Commissioner Nesta said. It's about compliance. It's not about the fines, it's not about the fees. And there's a lot of restrictions on who we can take. If they have a homestead exemption, we can't do anything with it, really. We can let the fines run, but we can't do a lot with it because of the homestead exemption on the resident. So, you know, they do look at and try to prioritize who needs to go to the attorney.
So when they have a homestead, what protects them with homestead?
Homestead. It's their homestead. You can't take it. So, and I'll let Mr., he's more first on this than I am, but that's pretty much it. It's their homestead, they filed for homestead exemption on it, and you can't.
That is 100% correct. And it's one of the reasons why people who owe big money in other states where homestead is not protected moved to Florida, if you'll remember way back when the old baseball commissioner Bowie Kuhn did that. He moved to Florida so he could take his money and keep it away from creditors by putting it in a really big house down here. That's very common.
So those liens or code violation that come before us to be resolved, that means that we are paid the $2,000 to have those filed?
Well, only if it's been, if it's been filed. Not all of them that come before you. We may be resolving it before whatever went to Mr. Shepherd's office. I don't know the status of the one that came before you tonight. I don't think it went to Mr. Shepherd's office. A lot of times, they'll be settled if the property's going to be sold. It's got to be settled, it's got to be resolved before the property gets sold. So they'll want to come into negotiations as to what they can do to pay the city, get the lien removed from their property, get the code enforcement fines resolved, whichever the case may be, and be able to improve the property. And that all comes with the stipulation that they are going to improve the property and come in to compliance with what the violations currently are.
So you're comfortable with the process you have in place currently?
I am comfortable with it. I mean, again, you all want me to send every one of them to over $1 million or a threshold, $500,000, to Mr. Shepherd's office? We can, we can do that. There is an extreme cost associated with this.
And again, my, and sorry to interrupt there, but my point is, and we've discussed this, and again, the only commissioner that goes to all these meetings and hearings and understands what's going on there is that we want compliance. If they're not, if we're not going to, if we're not willing to go to the worst-case scenario, and people know that we're not, they're going to take advantage of us, and they have. There's many residents that have, or many, what happens a lot is it's investment firms and companies that don't live here, that don't have a stake in our community other than rental homes or a, an old building that they may own. And that's what's being a blight on the community. And if we're not going to initiate something or be able to look back and say, as commissioners and as the city, be able to say, look, no, we have a policy in place that, once this hits, this isn't, we're not being, we're not targeting anyone. It's, hey, once this is hit, we're moving forward. It has nothing to do with your political affiliation, who your friends are, the amount of money you have. Once you hit this, we're moving forward. It's a policy. So I think.
And a lot of those that you mentioned are the ones we are going to go after, because they don't have the homestead exemption.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Because they're a corporation that owns a piece of property. So those are, you know, some of the fruit at the lower, lower hanging fruit that we are going to pick off, because they are the ones that we don't have to deal with. A lot of them that might be up over the million dollars might be a homestead exemption where we can't do anything. I mean, we can, I know you get a report, I don't know if your report, I haven't looked at it in a little while, includes which ones have homestead, I think it does have homestead exemption on it.
Yeah.
Last time I looked at it, and, you know, they can be at $5 million. There's really, what are we going to do?
Sure.
But the ones that are owned by corporations or owned by businesses where they don't have a homestead exemption, those are the ones that are easier, and I'm pretty confident we're going after.
Well, and so, and I, and I appreciate you bringing up the, I do ask for a pretty consistent list and updates on our code enforcement, our top, I think it's 15 or top 20 of who owes, who owes the most. And that would actually be beneficial, I think, for everybody, all the commissioners that have to.
Yeah, I was going to say.
To see what that looks like. I think that'll be very good for everybody to understand kind of the information I'm running with here. And because there's a lot of properties there, and not to rebut, but we are missing a few that are some higher properties that I know are not homesteaded and I know they don't have other liens.
And there are some organizations on there that do have some high fines, but they're in compliance now.
But there's still fines.
But there are still fines, but they're in compliance. And the goal here was to bring them into compliance. Eventually, some of those properties are going to be sold.
Well, and then we have repeat offenders as well, which is something that I know Lieutenant Brick does not prefer and goes pretty aggressively at them. So that, again, it's the, it's, and you had said it earlier as well. It's the ones that, I want to create a policy that is still fluid enough that you guys do what you need to do without any interference, but at the same time, it gives the teeth when it's needed. And there's some that I think that are needed. And again, I mean, we know that there's transitions in departments sometimes, and you may get new officers. We just got a new one, actually. He just did his first hearing yesterday, Mr. LeBron, and he did a great job. So it's those that help to.
We were fortunate to take him from Orange County.
I know. I'm very happy we did that. So it helps to have those in place for any of our new officers, things like that as well. So I, again, and it helps us to point as a commission, as a police department, to say, look, we're not weaponizing anything. It's in our policy. It's been written there, it's signed, it's delivered. We're, that's what it is. So I think it helps to create, again, more policies that are consistent across a board where there's no ambiguity, and nobody can say that there's anything inappropriate going on.
No, and obviously, we don't want any improprieties looked at.
Sure.
That make it look like we're doing anything. But at the same time, in some of these situations, you know, there has to be some discretion as to what are the violations? What is the situation, you know, that led to those violations and other things? There, there's, we're talking about people, people's homes and people falling hard times. How do we get them through that? What is their ultimate goal?
But, you know, it's a homesteaded property, that doesn't count, so.
I think that, you know, if you want, we can send all the commissioners the list that you currently get with the top 15, top 20, whatever. It's easy for them to populate. And if there's a particular property that you have an interest in or you want an explanation in, we can by all means meet, sit down, meet with you and discuss that particular property and decide which way we should go with it, or if we're not going in the direction you think we should.
See, I think right there, that, that's that inconsistency then. I think you, if I have a concern over a property, it takes that away, that nobody can have a specific concern. It's, it's met the threshold. But again, we can still create that ambiguity a little bit to where you let the officers do what they need to do at the same time. To your point, if it's not a repeat offender, it's one rental property that somebody owns, it's not their homesteaded property, no liens are on it, but they tall grassed once. They forgot to pay the fine, not a big deal. We're not going to foreclose on that one. So I want to create something that still allows your officers that flexibility, but at the same time, it doesn't allow me to meet with you and say, I want to foreclose on this property.
And we'll do whatever you want to do to all of you. I mean, you know, we try to process them in a fair and equitable way and deal with them. I don't know if Mr. Shepherd has any policy recommendations. I'm working with his office on a couple other ordinances and policies. I'll be happy to work with him on another one to see what we can do. But, you know, it's trying to write language that allows discretion. Sometimes it becomes as ambiguous as what we're trying to avoid.
The one property you referenced, this residential, it has a $6 million of a fine. So is that properly a homestead?
It is.
So there's nothing we can do?
Correct.
You want to hear it?
Yeah.
Okay, so in my prior legal life, before I started representing cities and governments, I did HOA foreclosure work, condo foreclosure work, deed and restriction enforcement. There's hardly a more thankless job in the world, other than maybe the road roader guy. And let me just say this. The policy that we used in order to ensure higher collection rates is we picked the worst, which is essentially what the chief is trying to do, and we went after them hard. And, and once we successfully took the property away from them or won a judgment in which they had to pay legal fees, you know, thousands of dollars in legal fees, et cetera, et cetera, in order to hang on to their homes or their cars or whatever else we might be taking, we would publicize it. I would, my advice to the homeowners in condos was, if you have a newsletter, put it out in the newsletter that, hey, don't let this happen to you. This is what happens when you do not pay attention to your fines, your assessments, your deed restrictions, or whatever it might be. So it's kind of the theory that the squeaky wheel gets the grease, much like people prioritize their credit card bills and other things versus their mortgage payments. Mortgage payments usually come first, because those are the ones that'll cost you your house. And the other things that are not secured, like credit cards typically don't cost you anything except bad credit. And so that's how people prioritize. And so once people realize that these code liens can be turned into actual foreclosures that mean you actually lose property, then the tendency would be to get them in line. Now, that's not going to work for everybody, because as the chief mentioned, if you've got corporate investor owners, they're just, they're just saying, you know, whenever you get around to me, in the meantime, I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing. But for, for the other folks, the ones that actually are just thinking that they can get away with it, the best education is by beating the crap out of people and then tell them that you've done that and they're coming for, you're coming for them next. Then they get on the compliance train. And so that, some version of that can work here. And if you ask the question, how would you notify them? Well, if you know who they are, you can notify them directly. If you want to put a broader notice, you certainly have the utility bills and the inserts and so forth. But my suggestion would be notify them broadly. Send out a certified mail, return receipt and so forth. Here's a copy of the judgment we just obtained from so-and-so in these three foreclosures. This is what's going to happen next, or you can come into compliance. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I think, but to your point, I like that idea. If we create a policy of that, because that, we just do it once, like you said. We need to continue to, it needs to be something we're doing twice a year, quarterly, whatever it may be, to keep that reminder going. And again, creating a policy that sets that and sets that expectation correctly, I think. So I would, I think it would be beneficial, especially on the real estate side. Just, I really feel that the market's going to be doing different things and that we may have more issues with this down the road, especially on the commercial property side, that we need to formalize something upfront now to get going with it correctly and support our officers correctly with this. So what I'd like to see is some type of, if we can, just get a draft policy. It doesn't need to be adopted, it doesn't need to be, if we can, just start on that at least. And let's see what that looks like by next meeting and kind of move forward from there, if we want to move forward.
And, I mean, I always offer that if any of y'all want to come in, Lieutenant Brick, I know sits down with them, you know, because the same thing applies to who we bring before code enforcement. You know, is the individual trying to make an effort to remedy the situation? If they are, we continue to try to work with them. If they're not trying to remedy the situation, they're going to go before the code enforcement hearing officer, and we're going to start the fines. So it does allow us that discretion to try to treat, you know, each individual and each situation differently, dependent on the circumstances and the individuals involved. I agree with you 100%. Corporations that probably have the ability to fix the problem and don't fix the problem, we need to do something with them. And I think those are low, like I said, low hanging fruit that we can do something with. Residentials, you know, individuals fall on hard times, they lose a job, they do this, and certain things happen and they can't do certain things or certain repairs, you know. But if they're making an effort and we can work with them to try to resolve that before we take them to the code enforcement hearing and those fines start, you know, that's better for our community and better for the individuals.
Well, I appreciate that. I definitely get that. And if we can, I still want to work on a, just a draft rough policy. Let's see what it looks like and kind of move forward from there.
Okay, I'll work with Mr. Shepherd.
Perfect, thank you.
I'd like to have a copy of the list.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to have a copy of that list.
Yeah, I'll have Lieutenant Brick send it to all of y'all.
That'd be valuable. Thank you so much, Chief. All right, that one, that one. I just want to say, congratulations to Commissioner Becker. This would have been his last meeting, but fortunately, it was his, the last one was the last one and we didn't know about it. So just congrats to him. I mean, he's moving on, has some really great endeavors that he's working towards. So it's exciting to see him grow and change and his family just prosper. I want to thank him for his service to the city. What he's shown us has been absolutely incredible, and it will not go unnoticed. And his legacy is going to truly live on here for a very, very long time. I mean, the, what's it, code enforcement, the Economic Development Department. I mean, we can pretty much call that the Becker Development Department. I mean, he truly endeavored that for years and years and years and finally accomplished that, which I was very happy to see him do that prior to him leaving. So kudos to him. I thank him for everything, and he, he set a high bar for all of us to get to. So I thank him for that. My last one is just, we have the oath of office, both for Commissioner-elect Anderson and I, on April 30th here in Chambers at noon. So feel free to stop by and come celebrate with us and see this cool event. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
All right. Well, I'd just like to say, congratulations also to Commissioner Becker for his services. I'm sure he's listening, or he will go back and listen later. And we wish him the best in whatever endeavor he's going to pursue. Just like to give a shout out to Public Works for the work they're doing on improving the embankments along some of our roadways, especially along Vic Road. That was one that I was very concerned about. And so I just wanted to say that they do an outstanding job, and just want to know that their work is going, is being noticed. Also to our police department for the work they're doing in our school zones. People have just been ignoring the flashing lights, and so it's a hazard for our kids. And so our police department has been present and very visible in making a difference in that area. And so I just want to say thank you for what you're doing in that area as well. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fusskes?
Okay, I think you covered a lot. I kind of like your idea about making some time for our constituents here in the city of, in City Hall. I spend a lot of time here, usually going back and forth and getting a lot of information. On that note, I also spend a lot of time with, with our staff. And I really want to thank our staff, because, you know, I do spend a lot of time with our CFO when I'm unsure about some of the finances, and she does give me the time. And last week, I actually spent probably about two hours with public services, with Mr. Diodat and Mr. Glenn Brooks. And it had to do with, you know, just getting a lot of clarity about the Golden Gem Pond that's out there and understanding some of the issues that are there and where they're going, how are they moving forward to try and remedy that, that problem that we have there. And so I really do want to thank, and also our city clerk, because I spend a lot of time getting public records from her all the time. And it has to do a lot with, a lot of our constituents do contact us, whether it's through phone calls or emails. So I know I make the effort of always trying to follow up and then trying to educate myself with just the information that I need to kind of give forward to our constituents so that they can feel like, you know, we are listening to them. Because in reality, the truth is that we serve them. And it's, they shouldn't have to be looking for answers. If they can contact us, good. So, you know, I may take you up on that and making some time for constituents. But, I mean, they, they reach out to me and I'm pretty much always getting in contact with them. So I just want to say that, and I think it's a great idea. You touched on the Chamber building, and that was something that I did speak to our recreation director, Mr. Radley, because besides our employees being the greatest assets to our city, the second most greatest asset that we have is our city buildings. And since we are working to kind of take control of our PAFKA Community Center so that we can give better service to our taxpayers who actually pay for that building. The Chamber has been out of service for over a year and a half, if not much longer. And obviously, the Chamber has had a long distinction of having the city building for, I think, what was it, a dollar a year? And the truth is, I've gone to many of our departments in the city where we're kind of busting at the seams with personnel. And as our city grows, we're hiring more staff to support our to support our, you know, day-to-day operations, but we don't have the space for them. So, at some point in time, I did, I did recommend to our director, Radley, for us to take over the chamber building, because obviously, the Apocca Chamber has been doing very well without the building. I don't know where they're meeting, I don't know how they're working since they've been without a building, and obviously, they're doing very well. So, I feel like we should have that building and be able to accommodate some of the departments that we have in the city that are in desperate need of space. So, that's something that we should consider. It would be consistent in the fact that if we want to have control of the Apocca Community Center, we should also do the same with the chamber building, because it is a great asset. I know that we're building a public safety building, but that's something that's going to be three to five years down the road, but in the meantime, our city has grown, we're hiring more staff, and we just don't have the space for them. And I know that because I've gone to many different departments within the city, from public services to utilities, to even just here in this building. And we once had an office here. I like to see a space designated for us. We constantly, I think we all share the conference room that has been designated for our former, you know, Edward Bass, but I feel like we need a space for privacy, and just to be kind of professional, I know all the other cities do provide a space for their commissioners so that we can see constituents. So, I'd like for that to be considered and maybe find a space for us. Again, everyone has congratulated our vice mayor, Commissioner Kyle Becker, just kind of say the same words. He's been a big asset here, and we all learned something from him, he will be missed, but we all wish him and his family well. I'm sorry that he didn't come to the last meeting, but, you know, it was his choice. He did the right thing. He closed on his home, and he was no longer a resident of our city. So, congratulations to Kyle Becker. We wish him the best in his new endeavors. I also want to say thank you to all the residents and all the texts and telephone calls for congratulating me on taking over the, the position that he held very proudly as vice mayor, and I want to thank the mayor because he was actually the second person to text me and just say congratulations. So, it's an honor and a privilege, and I really, truly appreciate the support and the friendships that I have earned in the many years that I have been here representing our city. The only thing I just tell people, you know, Kyle set the bar high. I am not, you know, I'm not as Becker was, but I will do my best to continue to represent you, to continue to be connected to our, our city as I do, and to really, when you call me and you have some issues and some problems or some concerns, I will continue to serve you as best as I can and get as much information for you. So, again, thank you, and to my husband, I think he's watching for his support. He has been the biggest support, and without him, I could not do the job that I do and give up as much time as I do away from my home and from my family so that I can continue to serve you. So, thank you to everyone, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Cliff, anything?
I'm disappointed to report that I have nothing to report.
Yeah, it's never a bad thing. Okay. All right, items from Mayor's office. Well, let's get the forensic audit out. I've got six items I'd like to add, Blanch, and I'll give you a copy of this, this list. First one, I want to verify the BTR, which is the Business Tax Receipt Payments from 2013 to current for Nesta Real Estate Consultants, BRPC Consulting, and Nelson's Insurance Services.
Okay.
Two, I want to get a copy or find out, make sure that the qualifying checks for all candidates for the 2022 and 2024 elections were, were proper and deposited. Number three, how many late campaign reports for Nesta, Smith, Velasquez, and Becker and Nelson for all the elections? And if you'd like, you can go through all seven elections I've been a part of. Number four, verify or discredit the excess income of interest income of One Florida Bank over Sunovis Bank from June of 2021 to June of 2023, when One Florida decided not to take on any City of Apocca deposits. Five, on the promises made, promises kept reelection Nesta postcard states. Number two, physically responsible spending, I successfully advocated and secured a solid investment option, earning approximately $1 million more per year in interest for the residents' funds, meaning lower taxes and the ability to invest back into the community. I need that the police verify that those extra earnings that Nesta secured and continues to generate. And then number six, I'd like to know the excess spending on attorney fees since our outside, our inside counsel was forced to resign. So, those are the six items I'd like, and I'll give you this copy.
Do you mean when you lied about the attorney? So, is that what you mean? That's good. No, I'm excited to see those fees as well.
Okay. Now, first up, Art and Village Festival, you know, coming up on April 27, 28, from 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, 10:00 to 4:00 on Sunday. The opening ceremonies will be Saturday morning at 9:30 at the gazebo. Was at the Mexican consulate Monday night to receive an award from the Alma 2023 International Award from the Association of Municipals of Mexico hosted by the Mexican consulate. We had a Supreme Court justice from Mexico City, Congresswoman from Colombia, and met a lovely lady that's the mayor of Ibex Municipality in Colombia. So, it was a great event, glad to be honored there. Next up, the, according to the Wallet Hub, Apocca ranked number 58 in the United States among small towns for starting a business. The study analyzed 1,334 small towns across the country weighing factors such as business environment, access to resources, and business cost. We've got the Business Chamber Expo, which is tomorrow, April 18th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at the Hilton Garden Inn. And last but not least, our own Cody McKinley was up signing his letter of intent. We had 13 athletes sign letters of intent at Apocca High School today, and if you add the other 10 that signed early, early signing date, it comes to 23 athletes, girls and boys that signed letters of intent to play at the next level. So, proud of Cody and proud of all the other 22 athletes that will be playing on at the next level. So, with that, call it a day.